Welcome, everybody. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shastbury Select Board. And I am calling this meeting of the Shastbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, February 3rd. First, I need to check with -- well, now, let me make an interruption here and make some adjustments to the agenda. We have two, selectmen out sick, and one on travel. So, the only way we're able to have a quorum is we have Art Whitman, who's interrupted his vacation and is calling in on the telephone, so he can be here. Given that, we are abbreviating the agenda just to deal with essential items. You can see the things I've crossed out on the screen. We do know that we have a number of people here who are anxious to make public comments, and we will do that, and they will get broadcast by Cat TV. So, that will still happen. But without objection from the board members, we will abbreviate the agenda to only include essential elements tonight.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
No. We're going to skip minutes. We're going to go to warrants. First up, I have check warrant number 20 in the amount of $163,648.25.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art. Items over $1,000 on this one include $6,800 to Apache Salt, $2,400 and $2,300 to Apalachee Salt, sorry. $2,300 to Bennington County Regional Commission. $101,685 to Delory Sales and Service.
That's the frame for the fire truck that was delivered to Toyn in Iowa.
For the fire truck, okay. Very good. $1,300 to Ed Schull Construction. That was...
That was the -- we extended the countertop downstairs in the clerk's office and made some other adjustments down there.
$1,600 to G A Boe Fuels. $2,800 to Hollis Hill Flooring.
That's the fire department. They did flooring at the firehouse.
$2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for cemetery maintenance.
That's because we pay monthly. He has to pay each month instead of all during the summertime.
And $22,000, $4,000 to Daley. What do you mean Daley? Was that...
That's mud.
That's for the mud we just had. And $27,000 to Woodard Equipment.
Boy, so that's some -- on the new Chevy, they put in the lights and the flashing lights, spotlight, and the tailgate sander.
Any other discussion on check warrant number 20? All in favor of approving check warrant number 20, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Check warrant number 20 in the amount of $163,648.25 is approved. Art, may I sign Tim Skoggins for Art Whitman on this warrant?
Yes, you may.
And next, I have payroll warrant number 15 in the amount of $26,719.68.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Aye.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So, payroll warrant number 15, $26,719.68 is approved. 3-0-0. Again, may I sign Tim Skoggins for Art Whitman? Okay, are there any announcements? Once again, I would remind everyone that we have open positions on the Planning Commission and the DRB. If you would like to serve the town in those capacities, just send an email to the town administrator, and your application will be considered.
I just want to note that we haven't represented Delores here for our sole bid on the truck, which will be the only other item tonight.
Oh, okay. Without objection, I would...
We were talking about it.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, Jeff Delores here, Delores.
Okay. Without objection, I would move the opening of bids on the single-axle truck to this point in the agenda.
Sure.
Art, are you fine with that?
Right, right.
Do we just have the one bid?
Just one bid.
They won't let me use a letter opener. I sliced several pieces of mail in hand.
You say yeah, and that's good.
You never know. Damn, is what I'm saying. Okay. The one bid from Delory Sales and Service for the total bid package on the single-axle truck is $151,575.
That's well within range. I'd like to have the bid reviewed by the road foreman, and then we can make a vote on it. That's all right.
Okay.
Just for the technical details of it, make sure it's everything he wants.
Yep. Without objection?
I'd like to -- do you need a motion for that, Ken?
No, if no one has objection, we'll ask Dave to ask the road foreman to review the bid.
Absolutely. But is that the only bid that we received today? Is that right?
Correct.
It's the only bid, and it's been advertised, and it's been on the statewide bid site for a month.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, before we accept the one bid, we need to have the road foreman verify that it meets the requirements of the RFP. Okay. Since there were no other announcements, that leads us to public questions.
How about public comments?
Public comments. Now, that's your fault. Lon and I have been arguing about what a public question is all day long today. And if I would ask, come to the chair. That way, Art should be sure and hear you.
Thank you.
Go first.
Sorry, I was waiting.
All right. How are you doing, Art?
All right. Very good.
Okay. There are two issues that I'm very concerned about. And they're independent issues, but they're both very significant in that the first issue is the Select Board voted to put on the Australian ballot the decision of whether or not the budget -- and it's not really the budget that you're putting on the ballot. The question is, should the voters be levied a certain amount of money for the expenditures of the town during the tax year? So, they're not approving the line items, they're not approving the expenditures, they're not even reviewing the anticipated revenues from other sources. They're just approving the amount of money that can be raised by taxes. But let's call it the budget. But I think the difference is significant because people get confused, are they really approving the expenditures that are put before them? Because they talk about approving the budget, and it's not the budget they approve. The warning says how much is going to be raised by taxes. Well, Vermont has a very specific statute that says the budget cannot be decided by Australian ballot unless there's a floor vote where it's warned, and the question is, should the budget be placed on the Australian ballot? Now, there's an argument that because the town has approved some public questions in the past, that any public question can be put on the Australian ballot. The statute doesn't say that. The statute gives the voters the power to either put some specific items on the Australian ballot or all items. And when it comes to the budget and budget items, the voters have to be warned at a floor meeting, you know, of a floor meeting where they're going to decide which or all of the budget items are going to end up on the Australian ballot. What you've done is not present this on the floor. You've gone ahead and you've drawn a conclusion, and I mean you collectively, because it was a 5-0 decision, you're all responsible for this decision. You've decided that in the past, since some items have been decided by Australian ballot -- you can decide any issue by Australian ballot, but that's not what the statute says, and that's not the opinion you got from VLCT. The opinion from VLCT said that you can go ahead and put it on the Australian ballot if that has been approved by the voters. Now, we have friends who are looking now for any examples of where the voters on the floor vote may have approved putting this article on the Australian ballot. Well, it's been discussed before, and it's been warned before. In '97, it was discussed but not warned, and 2000 and 2007, it was actually warned and voted down.
Actually, just for a point of reference, it was in...
Three, 2003 and 2007.
And it was in '94, it was discussed, actually.
Now, the evidence -- now, we've done one of two things with public questions. We either have been always doing it wrong, or we got it wrong this time. Because if you look at the public questions that are being decided, some are being decided on the floor, like the compensation of town officials. So, we have never adopted on the floor where we said all public questions are going to go to the Australian ballot. As a matter of fact, in my time, as best I can remember from all the Select Board meetings or the annual meetings I've gone to, town meetings I've gone to, the voters have only approved specific items like the not-for-profit appropriations. They have never voted to put all public questions on the ballot. So, the problem that leaves us in is that if this vote's taken, and let's say it passes, it would have not followed the proper procedure. And that leaves the people who do not believe the Select Board has followed the proper procedure, very little recourse other than maybe going to court and declaring it void and having the town a party to that kind of suit for injunctive relief, which would be a terrible situation for everyone. But that's where we're in right now. Now, I looked at Tim's list of places that decide questions by Australian ballot... And just to be clear, this is a list taken off the Secretary of State's website. This is not Tim's list. Well, it's the list you provided me to... I provided the link to it as well. The link didn't work. So, but I wouldn't have known about it had you not shared it with me. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you made it up. I just want that to be clear to everyone. Tim did not make up a list that said he's right and Lon's wrong. Yeah. What's the -- in the third back, is there a number at the very bottom?
No.
Yeah, there is up here. 168?
Yeah.
And this is 67. So, I took a play out of Tim's book, and I changed all the yeses on ones to ones and left all the noes as noes, and that would automatically count for me, how many towns did a yes. And then I did the same thing again, but turned the noes into ones. And I was just curious to see if half the towns had, you know, done the budget by Australian ballot. And 70% do it at the floor meeting, 20%, 28%.
28, yeah.
But there's a -- this is not all of the towns. Alice tells me there are actually 250 towns.
251, Alice?
I say 251, but some of those are Gores, some of those are unorganized towns.
Right.
And some of those are just town towns.
But among this list of 239, it's a 70-20 split. And there are some small towns that use Australian ballots, but a lot of them are the bigger cities, except for Burlington, which does a floor vote with $100,000 pay trust. So, in any event, I looked at this, and the one thing this doesn't tell me is which of the towns do a mix of some public questions on the Australian ballot and some public questions on the floor, and it makes no distinction. It clearly says we do the town budget on the floor. So, I think it's a logical mistake, but a mistake anyway, to conclude that any or all public questions can be put on the Australian ballot without voter approval from the floor. And I think if you went to -- back to VLCT and asked for specific instructions saying we don't have any vote at any time that allows us to put this on the ballot, can we go ahead and put it on the ballot anyway? And I think the statute's very clear because it talks about public questions and the budget separately. And it specifically says there's a procedure you have to follow for the budget. In other words, you need specific approval for that, putting it on the Australian ballot. And there's a reason for that. When people go to the floor meetings, their rights are not limited to voting the budget up or down. They can add money to the budget or to the amount to be raised by taxes, and they can decrease it. And there's nothing more nerve-wracking from personal experience than to be in Tim's position, having spent three months with a group of people I probably disagree with about something, about what's in the budget, and then having to defend it, thinking these people don't have half the information I do about what's in this budget and why we got to this point. Nonetheless, no matter how much I don't like that or how uncomfortable it may make me feel, that power is invested in the voters, not in the Select Board. I just want to try to clarify something. There are two times when the day belongs to the voters and not to the Select Board. And it was nothing I appreciated until having a long discussion with Judy Stratton. And she said the two days that the Select Board is not in charge of town business are Tuesday, when the voters are casting their ballots, and the annual meeting or special town meeting. That's the voters' meeting. It's not run by the Select Board. The Select Board are the guests there to present information, but it's run by an independently-elected moderator to run the people's meeting. And so, I think once you accept that distinction between whose meeting is it, it becomes clear why the voters have this power in that environment. Now, what you've done, without their approval, specific approval, you've said, we want it decided a different way. It's not form over substance, because if you put it on the Australian ballot, the voters can't actually change the amount to be raised by taxes. They can't pass motions that would affect how the money's going to be spent. So, I think you don't have legal authority right now to consider that a binding vote. And if you do go ahead and try to decide it's a binding vote already because of this analysis based on something that doesn't make key distinctions and a misunderstanding of the legal opinion, which was not an opinion about your specific situation, it was a description in general of the law, you're setting up a conflict that's not going to be in the best interests of the town per se or any of the citizens. The second issue... If I could... The second issue is when you've scheduled the meeting. Okay? You've scheduled it not at the historic time of 7:30. You've moved it ahead so it's in direct conflict with two other annual public meetings, both the MAU School District and the brand-new, very first Southwestern Vermont Unified Elementary School District. And you're making the voters choose between one or the other. And I think essentially, you're taking their vote away from them if they feel the necessity of going to the school meetings. And I think somebody shouldn't be deprived of their vote. Now, I don't like the fact that the school meeting is scheduled to get out like 7:00, 7:15, and people would have to rush up here. But if you've just left it at the original time, you know, there was a hope that people could get from the school meeting to this meeting and do what they've always done, be present at their school meetings, and then stay and vote at their town meeting. And I think the fact that you've moved it up for, you know, convenience really was not in the best interests of the voters. That's what you've done, but I think it's unfair to disenfranchise people of their vote, especially about the town budget. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Lon. I would ask a favor of you. I hope everyone realizes that we, in good faith, tried our darndest to get the right answer on this. And the people here, Dave and the town clerk, will back me up that we went round and round for a couple of days trying to figure out where that vote is supposed to occur. We got an opinion from VLCT that said it has to be on the floor unless you've decided to vote public questions by Australian ballot. The Secretary of State's website has the list that Lon mentioned that says Shastbury has decided to vote public questions by Australian ballot. To us, that seemed like a solid answer. Absolutely, we don't want to do the wrong thing, but this is, I think, beyond our capabilities to deal with. So, we're going to have to think about, you know, how we arbitrate two legal opinions. But I appreciate what you said, and we will certainly study it to the best of our ability. Can I add one thing?
Ken?
Yes.
Art, is there any next for me?
Yes, Art.
Can I -- I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes and just tell the public how this came about. It wasn't -- Kenny had it in at a meeting, but the number of people that show up at a town meeting, at the town meeting, is getting less and less every year. I don't know if that's completely true. I know there are times when Jim would be passed a bell because of mud season or something else that was in conflict at that time, but we certainly don't see the Jim anymore. And so, his comment was that fewer and fewer people are having a vote on the budget, which is the main thing of the town. And we actually didn't decide anything. We actually tabled that discussion for a while, while you and other people looked to VLCT and to see how many other towns were doing it. And, you know, it came back that there were some towns that did it on Australian ballot, and we didn't want to understand, you know, all the complications of some portability and some not and that sort of stuff. But, so, I mean, we decided that it was fair to let the people decide how they wanted to do it. I mean, I personally am against the Australian ballot because we need this. This is the true form of democracy. But if people wanted that way, then I felt that it should be put to the public. So, again, we want to do it right. It's not that we're trying to do away with it or anything. I just feel it was my responsibility as elected by the people to do what they want. And some people seem to think that maybe that was what Jim and Pollard were thinking, but again, it was not our intent to do away with this.
Can I offer one thing? It's just that Tim's been very open in our conversation. We've had a very productive back and forth, and it's been with the idea of what's the right thing to do and how to do this correctly. So, I've never had personally any feeling that there was some other agenda or whatever. It's just like, you know, it seems fair that if we have 300 voters and 60 people at town meeting, that the 300 voters, I mean, that's all very logical and makes sense. It's just, in this instance, we've got a statute that says you have to do that in a very particular way or it's not valid. If we didn't have that statute, nobody'd be sitting here right now.
And I'd like to reiterate that our thought was, my thought personally, was as many people as I can get to participate in voting those expenditures, the better off we are. Also, because we are either live or streamed or the meeting is shown afterwards, there's many more people who are watching at home as opposed to people who are participating in these meetings. Also, every budget meeting that we have prior to town meeting is publicly warned, and people have the opportunity to have that input with a lot more facts than at town meeting. But I've also been to town meetings where there are ambushes and are pretty hostile. The only thing missing is the pile of stones. So, you know, and so, we really wanted, I mean, we'd love not to have that problem, but, I mean, we're pretty civilized, so it's been okay. It's interesting because then the question arises, can we have a vote only on the expenditures and be able to add other stuff at a town meeting?
Well, we did last year.
Yeah, we did.
That happened last year.
But that was, but we voted also on the -- we also voted on the budget or whatever we're voting on. But I'm saying if we did the budget by Australian ballot, but then were allowed to add or subtract, you couldn't do that, right?
You can't take, you can't add a line item to the budget. But you could say to the Select Board, you need $20,000 because...
Well, you gave us 40 for gravel.
Right.
Which was great. Thank you.
Right. We would be if that hadn't happened.
I know.
Right. But you have the discretion because the budget is aspirational. Here are our goals and objectives. But calamity happens, trucks break down, fire trucks that were great last year are a piece of junk today, and you need to move the money around. So, that's just the nature of what you do after you get...
So, it would have to be an all-or-nothing vote?
On the Australian ballot.
On the Australian ballot.
Right.
Okay.
So, yes or no?
But we still have to decide, I mean, we still have to get the legal opinion on that, right, from Vermont League?
If it goes to Australian ballot, you have voted thumbs up, thumbs down, the Select Board then has a certain number of days, I don't remember what it is, to oppose a new budget that can then gets voted on again. But you don't get to vote down parts of it. If it's Australian ballot, it's up or down.
But the, right, but the question today is what do you do if you get a vote by Australian ballot that was not authorized by the voters?
I get that, yeah. I know what you're saying.
And does it make sense to stop the presses, so to speak, and stop them from printing that question on the ballot, if that can even be done now, because there is a process...
Because there is a process for that. Or if it can't be stopped, to manually delete it from the 600 some-on ballots that a group of six or seven people could do in probably an hour or so? But, you know, something should be done. There should be some recognition of what's going to happen with that ballot item.
All right, we should move on and let other people talk. Carl, please come forward.
Hi, yes, I'm Carl Foreman. I'd like to endorse what Lon has said. And as much as he has kind of emphasized the procedural, I'd like to emphasize the substantive. My concern is that if we have votes on a budget at the town meeting, and someone decides that we need to change, perhaps substantively, the dollars that are involved, and that may be held up to go on to the Australian ballot the next day, the town is not going to know what they are really voting on. They're going to, they may have an idea from reading articles in the paper before, that there's X amount of dollars for road, there's Y amount of dollars for administration. If that gets mixed up, and based on a vote at the town meeting, and then held over for an Australian ballot for endorsement by the town, those voters are going to come in and not necessarily have that information. And they may be voting for something that they never intended to vote for. And that is a great concern to me. Because having an educated electorate is what we're all about. And if the idea is to go to an Australian ballot simply because we don't want people throwing stones at the town meeting, but in fact, what they're voting on is not what they thought they were voting on, we've lost the entire benefit of the town vote. And secondly, when I hear that, well, we've only had a few people show up at the town meeting, and they're not necessarily going to represent the full electorate, and we'll get more people the next, if we have an Australian ballot, what's the thought process? Where's the evidence that in fact, you're going to get more people showing up? What's the evidence that this is a fix to a problem that we may or may not have? Specifically, let's say we keep the town meeting, and the budget voted for at the town meeting. If we modify the budget at that meeting, everyone in that room is going to know how it's modified. They're going to know what they're voting on. If it is modified, then held over to an Australian ballot within 24 hours, and those voters, albeit perhaps two or three times the number that were sitting there, are voting on something that they never heard of, how is that possibly better for the town? How is that possibly not more troublesome for the voters to say, "Wait a second. I didn't vote for that extra $40,000 of the gravel. When Lon did it, we were all sitting there. We heard it, and we voted on it. But the next day, if it were on the ballot, and somebody heard, it read in the paper two days later, they increased it by 40,000, and somebody said, 'Wait a second. I didn't vote on that. That wasn't what I thought it was.'" We're not, we're not really doing a service to the public.
If it's televised, though.
If it's televised, what difference does that make?
Well, I think they're still informed. Even though they may not be present at that town meeting, they're still, they're still participating.
No, they're observing.
They're observing.
Observing, as we can see with what goes on in Congress, sitting in the galleries is not participating.
Carl, before you leave that, just to make sure, I understand your point there. You're saying if the budget is changed at town meeting, people won't know what that's about when they vote for the budget the next day?
If the budget, if hypothetically, $50,000 for gravel, and it's determined that, based on the floor discussion, that that dollar value should be $150,000. And then it's going to be, and it's agreed, that is what the budget will increase, will be. And it's going to be voted on the following day by Australian ballot. Who is going to know necessarily that it's gone up 100,000? The people that watch, maybe. But if the people that watch are not able to object?
I understand you, what you're stating, and that's not how this would work. Yeah, if we, it's either/or. If we move the budget vote to the Australian ballot, there will not be a budget vote at town meeting.
You wouldn't have any discussion at town meeting about changing anything?
Nothing would be changed.
Because you couldn't, you wouldn't be able to. So essentially, essentially, what would happen is that you would have many fewer people at town meeting than we have right now, because there'd be no point. I mean, let's face it.
So it wouldn't even come up?
Let's face it.
Let's let Carl decide.
It'd be an information... That's even a worse situation.
It'll be informational. You'll go, you'll get a presentation, you'll ask some questions, and you'll go home. That's what town meeting will be. It will be an infomercial about tomorrow's...
Well, that clarifies it. Because based on our discussion, I think that's the paraphrase that we can say here. We would have an infomercial at town meeting.
Yes.
Okay, let's point out that it will be like the school board town meeting, which I have just been criticized for keeping people from going to.
That, yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
Well, not you. The board.
The board.
Thank you.
Spread it out. You give another wild card on that. You too, Art.
The time was all Tony's.
We know you're there, Art.
And then I would then also, though, emphasize that if we're talking about having issues that are of concern because we don't have enough people, merely by changing the process without evidence that will actually increase that participation is hypothetical. And we're changing something that has been in existence for several hundred years because we think this might be better. And I haven't heard any evidence that it would be better.
I'm hearing two different things, though. I totally agree with you that this is the purest form of democracy that we have left. And I'm always thankful for that. I'm always, I always marvel at it.
In the country.
In the country. And I, you know, I marvel at the towns. I love Karen's idea. I marvel at the towns that have all-day meetings and potlucks, and they bring their children, and, you know, I love, I love all of that. However, I also think that the world has changed. I think that there are a number of people, and I've spoken to a few of them about the fact that they watch regularly, which I don't understand. It's got nothing else to do. But sometimes our meetings are quite boring. But they do. They watch. They watch what's going on. And we get input from that. And they also have the opportunity, because of it being televised, and because the agendas are out there long before this process is finalized, that they could come in and to have input. And they do feed us information and that kinds of thing. So I think I'm, I'm sort of getting the fact that more people are participating because in fact, it's easier than having to get dressed up and show up at a meeting. So, you know, but I, my point, again, was that I voted for this primarily because I want more people to participate. And I'm concerned about the fact that it's a very small group of people. There are about, we average about 700 to 1,000 people voting.
Yes. But, but...
And we don't have that many at the town meeting.
But look at the price that you're paying for that. You're denying...
I understand that. I understand that. But I'm also saying that it's not just the old-fashioned town meeting, that there is a whole new set of media out there that is available to people, and people are participating that way, just by observation. Now, because they don't come, or they don't, you know, sometimes they're happy with what's going on, and they don't, they don't need... But if there's a gripe that they have, they show up. They come, and they have a point. And they, you know, we hear what they have to say. So I don't want to shut those people off. You know, and there are people out there that can't come to a meeting.
If I may make a suggestion, okay? And I understand your point. But it seems like we're kind of, to do what you're doing is kind of going halfway. That is to say, we can have people see what is being discussed so that the next day, they can go in and vote on it. Which means that they will understand what it is, and therefore be informed. But they aren't really participating as if you would, sitting in the room. They're watching.
But if they can't participate?
Well, wait, 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 let me finish. I mean, that's why I say it's only halfway. If you, if we, the town, really wanted to have that extension to all those, we would do exactly what they do at any major worldwide auction. You'd have people calling in. You noted the capability of communications.
If we could do that, Carl, I would do it in a heartbeat.
Well, my point is, if that is a better way of going, and a broader exposure of give and take by the populace, which a town meeting is supposed to be, that's what should be investigated. How do we go about doing that? As opposed to, well, let's just have people observe. The more people observe, the more involved. But the observation, as I said, as we've seen the last couple of weeks, is not participation. That's what I'm saying. Thanks, Richard.
Karen, it should be you next.
Yeah, happy to come up. So, you know, I really do get the issue with getting, that you're getting more people voting by Australian ballot than you do at town meeting. There's no question. Back in 2003, we had a vote. I had had a few people come up to me with the same questions that they had, obviously, for Kenny, which it sounds like that's what sparked this, from what I read in the minutes. Because I heard nothing about any of this. You talk about media and all of that stuff. I saw nothing. December 2nd was when you voted it. It was on your agenda. You voted it that night, 5 to zip. There were some concerns, but you all voted for it. I'm still concerned with the fact that we had a history in this town of how it was done. Some of you know, because you were there, that it has been by-the-floor vote. We had a very extensive conversation. We had a public hearing back in 2003. And it just seems to me it came up in 1994. It came up as a question on the floor. And people talked about it, had extensive discussions. The same thing happened 2007, which actually was the one I was involved in. And, you know, we can, we can say we'll get more people to vote on it, which is certainly true by Australian ballot. But if you really want to do it, I think, the right way, and follow the tradition that has been Vermont, is one of the reasons, you know, I'm not a born Vermonter. I've been here 40 years. I've been to every town meeting, with the exception of one, in those 40 years. I cherish that about this state. It is democracy at its best. Ed Colvin and I used to get into an argument about this. And Ed completely turned when he realized what would be lost at town meeting if we were not voting on the budget. Now, I very much support putting it out there to the people. It's the reason it's come before the town about four times in the last 20 years or so. And it's always been defeated. And some people will say, "It's going to be defeated." Because if you put it to voice vote at town meeting, the only people that are going to vote on it are the people that come there all the time. Okay, well, let's just turn that on its side and say, "Okay, folks, anybody that comes to town meeting can change the way we're voting on it." So get those 500 people in there that maybe would vote against it. Come in. Get it out there on social media. "We're having a public hearing. We want to know what you're thinking." "The public hearing, we're going to be voting. This is a special meeting to discuss, you know, Australian versus floor meeting ballot." And honestly, if people do not get themselves out there for that, then they must figure it's okay. It's not that big of a deal for them. But I just, I think especially in these times when we're all feeling like, you know, "Look at what's happened to the school system." You know, and I was on the board 25 years ago. We were worried about local control, losing local control. We've lost it. I talked to people in Woodford. They won't go to meetings anymore because they feel their voices have not been heard. Nobody's listening to them. And I don't want that to happen in our little town. I mean, you know, we had a wonderful town meeting last year. We honored Alice. We had cake and coffee. I'm not telling you how many people came up and said, "We've got to do it again." You heard what my suggestion was on timing. If you can't change it, you've got it out there at the paper. Tell people, "We're going to have a potluck from 6:30 to 7:30, so you can get here after the school meeting." I know people don't go to school meetings. They don't go because there's nothing they can do. There's nothing to vote on anymore. So you get very few people. What happens every year with town meeting? You've got the administrators, and you've got teachers, and you maybe have five, 10 to 10 people out there in the audience. Half of them are select board members who are getting ready for their own meeting after that. And then, comes 7:15, the line starts forming. And that's when they start checking people in for the town meeting, which is, what, 25% of our taxes? But it's the only thing that people can come in and moan and groan and throw stones and do all of those wonderful things you do in a democracy. And I'm sure our founding fathers did way worse than any of us are doing. But I do think if, and it may happen. It may happen that a floor vote decides we'll go to Australian ballot. And I would see it truly as the end of town meeting. And the ability for townspeople in the one forum that they have, to be the legislators. You're not legislating. It's the townspeople. We have the right to do that. And maybe we need to be educating people more. Maybe we, you know, need more of an outreach if we're putting a question like this before them. We had a lot, a lot of people at the town meeting in town 2007, when it was discussed. And it was unanimously against it, against the change. And there were people, again, who came in there with the idea that they were going to vote for Australian, against it. That they wanted it on Australian ballot. Others who said they didn't want it on Australian ballot. And it ended up being unanimous. Because people were able to sit and talk with each other and give opinions. I mean, back in, I forget if it was 94 or 2003, when Ed Colvin got up, because there was a complaint. Somebody said, "Well, people are afraid to speak at town meeting." You know, some people can talk publicly. Other people, they just can't do it. And they're too shy, so it's not fair to them. And Ed stood up, and I remember it vividly. And he said, "Listen, if we're talking about people not having the guts to stand up and speak their mind at town meeting when it's the only chance that they really have the power to do that, if we take that right away from people, then..." You know, I mean, he basically said, "This is, you know, we are, we're disenfranchising our people in terms of, you know, our democracy and the way it was intended to be." So, anyway, that's my passionate plea for somehow resolving this. And I'm still all for, you know, I'll have to organize a potluck at 6:30 if you can.
Michael Biddy popped his hand up first. And then send it.
I'd like to suggest that one of the reasons for a reduced attendance at the floor vote meetings, at the actual town meeting over the past few years is that the select board has been doing such a good job at doing the people's business. And I want to go back in time. I've lived in the town a few decades, and I've watched town meeting. I can't say I've been to everyone, but I've been to most of them. I've watched the ebb and flow of the crowds. And first, I want to say, well, I think it has ebbed and flowed. And then give you a quick example of how, if you went back in time, you might find that, if you look at the votes that were held, I imagine there's records of the votes for the different things. Some of them were, you could tell there was a lot of people there. People showed up because they cared about, they cared very much about an issue. And the fact that after we got the approval of the garage for the town, there hasn't been as much that's been controversial. And I really think that... And I, I really think that, you know, the, the, the people care and they know when things are going well. So they don't necessarily have to go to that meeting. But it is probably, like Karen was saying, our last direct democracy in this country that we live in. We have a representative democracy in, in Washington. We don't get to vote on things in Washington. We vote for people who vote for things. But I want to say one reason why there aren't as many people, even in counting the votes of those things, I have two friends who were at one of these controversial meetings, standing in the back stretching going, I know how you're going to vote. Yeah, well, I know how you're going to vote. I'll leave if you will. Because we're just going to cancel each other out. So they both left. And as they drove away, they looked over their shoulders at the other car to make sure. Yeah, you really need to leave. Anyway, I'll leave it like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The people who spoke passionately about local democracy probably didn't like your story.
I agree with everything that's been said thus far. I think we're going to decide, I assume this conversation is also going to happen at the floor meeting, not just Australian ballot? About whether or not we put it on Australian ballot?
Oh, no. It's a done deal.
No. Okay, so then I will jump up and down and say, you've got to be crazy. No offense, but that's like, really not good planning. So you need to amend that because if it isn't on the agenda, you can be pretty darn sure it's going to come up. And people are going to have some pretty strong feelings about it. So, what I was going to start this with was the fact that I assumed we would be having this conversation pro or con at town meeting. I am appalled to find that we will not be having that conversation at town meeting and you really need to address that. So that's, that makes me much browcher. But, coming back to process that Lon has very eloquently described and referenced, when I was on the select board, and, sorry, I can't remember if it was 2003 or 2007 sometime, this issue did come up. And what also came up as part of the issue in the floor vote was a very careful discussion of what had to happen if this was going to be, ever be on Australian ballot. And it was the process that Lon described. So, not only do we not have a vote somewhere that says all these things, ballot articles are going to be decided by Australian ballot, we actually have conversation, I have no idea whether that stuff shows up in minutes, but we had conversation that expressly said these discussions had to happen at the floor meeting before, if you will, the power of the floor got turned over to somewhere else. That's where it was and that's where it needed to be decided. So, I don't know what your recourse is in terms of this town meeting, but I do sincerely hope you will go ponder this deeply. I don't know if the warning has been printed and all of that stuff is done. If you need to change the date of town meeting in order to make this happen, I think it's worth doing. That said, the other thing that is extremely distressing is the other issue that's been raised, which is the conflict of meetings. And again, no offense, you're all nice guys, but what were you thinking? We're citizens. A whole bunch of us like to be citizens and like to do citizen things, like go to our meetings and vote and squat and what have you. I mean, that's part of being a citizen. And you're taking that away from us. So, I don't think we want to go quietly about that. No matter what gets decided at school meetings, whether it's important or whether it's not important, I want to be able to go. And I want to be able to go to my town meeting. And I think as a citizen, I have a right to be able to do both of those things. And for you guys not to schedule conflicts for us, other towns in the county managed to figure this out and not create the conflict.
When would you have liked us to schedule the meeting?
Sorry, I'm retired. I'll come whenever you schedule it.
Well, the reason I ask is, this was debated extensively and you're, you're, you're suggesting that what were we thinking when we scheduled it at the same time? And what we were thinking was, one, the school board scheduling their meeting at 6:45 pretty much clobbered any hope we had of people getting to both, to be realistically giving people a chance to do both. We were looking at our town meeting at 5:00 or 8:00.
Why not 7:30?
7:30 also came up, as I say.
That's unknown, that has always been our normal time, 7:30. So why change it?
Because there was, it was decided that, or assumed, because, you know, this was, like I say, this was not an easy decision to make. It was assumed that a 7:45 meeting in Bennington, that...
No, it was 6:45.
6:45, sorry.
Would be hard to get to 7:30 in Chaffsberry.
The 6:45 meeting in Bennington, people were not going to get to a 7:30 meeting in Chaffsberry.
Well... The town meeting is scheduled for 7:00 PM, where the close of the elementary school meeting.
The Bennington, you're talking, the Bennington Town?
The Bennington has scheduled their town meeting for 7:00 o'clock or immediately after the Southern Vermont Union Elementary School District. So, Powell has scheduled theirs for 7:30.
Woodford?
Woodford has scheduled for 7:30. I mean, all you had to do was leave it alone. And we could talk about it next year. People could, could stay there for the first part and if they had to leave, you know, at 7:15 to get to a town meeting, they could. But, but now instead of having some slim hope of getting to the town meeting, you basically say, choose your meeting. Go exercise your right to vote in Chaffsberry or give up your vote because you feel it's important because you've got kids in school to go to your school meetings.
Well, and the other issue we have, we actually have, our state legislator is an MAU board member this year. I don't know if he's planning to run again, I have no idea. But, you know, I had the thought today, what if our, our, if David Durfee can't be at our town meeting because he's at the school meeting? We have a couple of other Chaffsberry members who are on, Scott McInnany is somebody, you know, when I was looking at the, the list, is a, is a citizen. He's going to have to be at the school meeting. I mean, you could, you could start at 7:30 and not take a vote until...
6:30 and not take a vote?
I mean, no, no, I'm saying, move back to 7:30. And if you're, you were thinking that people, well, they still might not get there at 7:30, then you hold any votes until 7:45? Or in any case? Well, I think if the, if the school meeting is at 6:30 or 6:45, whatever it is. I mean, there's also negotiating with the school system. I mean, this creates an issue for the whole, everybody involved. It's not just Chaffsberry. And, you know, but I think the bottom line is, you can't make us choose where we want to be citizens. That's just not okay.
I would also suggest if it's been historically held at 7:30, there may be a number of people that don't get the banner, that just think, well, I've been to the meetings every year for the last 30 years, it's at 7:30. And they'll show up at 7:30.
And if you're doing a really good job, it'll be all over.
Well, let me again suggest that this would have been great to hear while we were sitting here, looking at each other going, I don't know, when do you want to do it? I don't know, when do you want to do it? To know that people felt strongly about it would have been helpful. And a reminder that participatory democracy does not only happen at town meeting. It happens at select board meetings. Every two weeks, we're here. We would love to have this kind of input, but we haven't had it, so...
Well, it's also, it is about the outreach too. I mean, you've made, you made two very major decisions recently. Well, one of them was back in early December. And I don't know whether you've, you know, how much you've tried to get that word out there, that folks, this is, things are really different this year. I mean, I know we don't, you know, we used to even have town newsletters. Years ago, we used to send out a quarterly newsletter to sort of let people know what is happening, what, what's coming up. And it is hard. It, it's hard, I mean, I, you know, I've always been pretty engaged, but I'm, I've stepped back a lot since I was on the board. I don't come to the meetings. I hear, you know, sort of rumors of if there's an issue, and then I'll come. I think it was Michael who was saying, maybe be glad you don't have a lot of folks there because it probably means that people are happy with how things are going. That is a dilemma for you guys. There's no question about it. It's, most of us have been in that position in board work. Almost everybody in this room. I think everybody in this room.
Just, just so we know, how many people who are here think the best thing to do would have been to keep it at 7:30? That's everybody, okay.
So, I have just a couple of other things. In terms of outreach stuff, we're in one of those dead spots in Chaffsberry where you can't get cable. And my neighbors, a quarter of a mile up the road.
Yeah.
But we don't. So, I, I don't watch your meetings. I'm sorry.
I, I don't either.
It's not an excuse not to read.
I can't get it either. I have to do it. I have to do it online.
Okay.
I do YouTube or I do it stream, live streaming.
But anyway.
I got it for free.
What I was going to suggest is, and I, I think I said this last year at town meeting, you know you're old when you preface something with, "When I was a kid."
Yeah.
But, when I was a kid...
Which was only just a couple of weeks ago.
No, actually, it really was quite a while ago. When I was a kid, town meeting day was a state holiday. Schools were closed. I grew up going to town meeting as a little kid. We had, it was during the day. We had potluck, dinner. I don't know whether people got paid for that day or not. I think we should be really lobbying the legislature to go back to making town meeting a holiday. And people get paid if they bring in a note that says, certifies they went to their town meeting.
It's a state holiday.
I mean, it's, it's ridiculous for us to say how much we value democracy, how much we value this process, and then make people squeeze it in between two jobs, working all day, coming out at night, and keeping track of all this stuff. If it matters, let's say it matters. And do the stuff that actually indicates that it matters. That's not directed at you guys. That's, Vermont does have a really special thing. And if the country's any measure of what's going on in the world, you know, if we lose it, we're not going to get it back. So, we really need to pay attention to that. That's it. Thank you.
Alex?
I'm going to move this here, if you don't mind. Is that in line that goes on the video?
Well, Art is on the line here.
Just so you speak loud enough for Art to hear.
Hi, Art, it's Alice.
What's up?
And some of us have a hard of hearing here and they read lips. So it's kind of, it's hard to hear when someone's back is to you. Well, I learned about this, the idea of going to the ballot, what's it called?
Australian.
Australian ballot in the newspaper tonight. And I could just tell by my own emotional reaction, which included a terrible sense of loss and disbelief that our town meeting, as it currently is, would be changed. That people, instead of coming in, letting down their hair, asking questions about things that concern to them, getting educated by you people on why you made this decision and that decision, where people change their minds based on the kinds of things you had to say to them. Where people change their minds because they heard their neighbor at that meeting say something so different from what they came in believing. You don't get that when you walk into the fire station and put a check mark in a box. You just don't. It's so flat and so nothing. And it doesn't end there, town meeting. The next day, you walk around town, you sit at, at, in the fire station checking people in, everybody's laughing and talking about what happened. It humanizes us. It makes us real to each other. Makes us really kind of like each other. Check or hate each other. But, you know, you talk about throwing rocks, I think not. We have passed every single budget. You have passed every single budget you have presented to the people of Chaffsberry. You should be very proud of that. You're not going to feel that, you people. You're not going to feel that pleasure and feel how proud you should be if you don't see them at work. Those are our people at work. Those are our people showing you what democracy is all about. Participating, participatory democracy, so important. So, everyone here has been so eloquent, and it's late at night. But I would say to you, since you believe so much in food, where are the donuts tonight? And a cup of coffee would be nice too. But I'm teasing, I'm kidding you.
Carl promised he was going to bring donuts.
Be very careful with this. This will really, I think, light up the town in a very negative way if you take this away from the people. And remember, this has come up before. And it was passed unanimously. Why would you even think to do such a thing as this when it's passed unanimously?
It's actually been defeated unanimously.
Defeated, yeah, to change it, defeated unanimously. Why? Why is it an issue?
Because we've heard from people out there who do not go to town meeting. And give them an opportunity to...
Why make life easier for people like that?
They have an opportunity.
Why make it life easier for them? Can I get to the meeting? Big deal, once a year? Can't get to a meeting that's so important? Look at you.
I have to object to that. There are people who...
All right, well, wait a minute, I'm talking.
No, no, please, please. There are people who are homebound, who, who have physical problems, who cannot get out and come to a town meeting. Now, to trivialize those problems is, is not acceptable to me. And our thinking, and our thinking...
That's not fair.
Somebody who can, is homebound, who can send in a, an absentee ballot, that is extending participation, not inhibiting it. So let's not trivialize it.
Believe me, believe me, I know a lot about that. And, but that, that's not it. The people who are not coming to the meeting, most, the majority of the people are people who could very easily get there. And the people who are not coming to the meeting, who are sitting there watching it, mostly on Cleveland Avenue, the downtown streets, where most of the Comcast is and where most of, most people can watch it on TV, they, they become part of it. They see their friends on TV. They see their friends saying this and saying that and arguing about this and arguing about that. It wakes them up, it enlivens all of us. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
I mean, actually, you know, you could, you could look at that a different way, Tim, in terms of homebound folks, unless they have no ability to see it on television, they would probably feel more engaged just in hearing the conversation and the debates that go on at town meeting than getting an absentee ballot on a budget number the next day and voting it and having somebody deliver it and having not emotionally or intellectually even participated in watching the debate that might have taken place the night before. Because there won't be that debate the night before any longer. They will get a piece of paper the next day, but there'll be no ability for them to even consider thinking, gee, you know, it would be nice to vote for this or not vote for that. Do you know what I'm saying?
And, and why not? And why not?
Just let me answer Karen's question. I mean, keep in mind, if somebody watches the debate at town meeting about the budget and they are homebound, they don't get to vote on the budget.
I understand that. I do understand that. And that would be lost. The ability to check that box for their, a quarter of their taxes or whatever, like they do for the schools, they would lose that ability if they're homebound and they cannot come to town meeting. What they would not lose is being able to watch it on CAP TV, watch what many times can be an animated meeting. And it's the, you know, the mic is passed all around, they can hear the yes, the no's, the pros, the cons of whatever. So in a way, they're more, I would say, that they could be more engaged in what is going on in their town government by that experience than just checking the box. Now, you know, of course, you can argue that, well, it's their tax dollars and they have the right to say, because I could really be wrong, but it would not surprise me if you might have more of a problem passing a town budget by Australian ballot than floor vote.
But, but Tim, right now, we have Art on the phone. Art is not here. Art is participating. And Tony was talking about this new realm accurately of communications. If we have television for people to watch and we have communication capability where people can call in and ask questions, maybe they can't vote because they're not there, but they can participate in a meaningful way with a give and take. Let their grievances be heard. Set up a couple of phone lines, or even one phone line, and you have increased that potential.
Is there any...
Well, Tim, I... Wait, wait. Before we break down into this argument, let me make sure that no one else has, wants to make comments. Mike, Paulie?
Hey, Art, it's Mike Foley. I just wanted to say from sitting here and really kind of tuning in lately, that the amount of time we spend on planning commission issues, especially just something simple as the country store, how do we, that took months and months and months in deliberation and back. The Airbnb to a small, a home occupation, this is the kind of thing you really gotta take your time with. And no one's talking about December 2nd or December 5th or December, that's, you're talking way down the line for a big issue like this from where I'm sitting. And you are definitely disenfranchising people, whether you're giving some people more participa- participation in the actual vote, you are actually taking away people's ability to actually affect that vote. So I think this is something that really you guys need to let go. I'm talking a few years. You've got to really start getting the feeler out and start talking to people and say, hey, because December 4th, I was, I, I mean, we just had a meeting just tonight out at a solar array, we had a site visit. People are doing other things and people are participating in the wrong way. That doesn't mean that everyone has to pay attention to everything that goes on, but I haven't heard anything until really recently and really heard more about it. Yes. And I think this is one of those things, again, I'm talking from a planning commission way, zoning bios, things that just, this is one of those things that really takes time to sort of find the right answer to. And I don't think just participating itself is, or people's attendance at a meeting is really a big issue for a select board to have to, let's find out how we can get more people to come to town meeting. This seems, excuse me, drastic, you know, to, as an answer to that.
Bill, you're the only one who hasn't spoken yet. Do you have other comments?
Yes, that's true. And I will, my reflection on all of this is that I unfortunately see both sides of the issue. I've come to Shafterbury Select Meeting for, since somewhere 1991, 92, with a few exceptions. And I've, at least anecdotally, noticed a decline in attendance at those meetings.
Pardon me. Art, can you hear?
No, not really well.
All right, Art, you want me to come up? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Not really well.
Okay. Well, I was observing that I've come to Shafterbury Select Board meetings for approximately...
Town meetings.
Town meetings, excuse me, 30 years. And during that time, I've noticed a decline in attendance. I've also noticed a decline, if you'll forgive me, all the people here who love this participatory democracy, a lot of foolish discussion that dragged the meeting on forever and ever, from my point of view, and really didn't, in my mind, achieve much. You know, I see the argument for being able to participate offsite, if you will, through telecommunications capability, but not everybody's, all of us in town have that capability. I think if you're really interested in the budget, you're really interested in town government, you go to the budget meetings, you participate, you understand what the issues are, you make your presentation. You know, I certainly, in my mind, you know, and I come from a different environment, it wouldn't matter to me one way or the other if we had a budget vote at the town meeting, but I understand the concept and I understand the importance to the community of maintaining the town meeting with the budget discussions. If you pull that out, I don't think there's much left. And I think if you think you have a small group now, you probably have a mini group at the next town meeting where that's, that budget is not discussed and voted on at that town meeting. Did I say enough? Can I leave now?
I understand, Tim, that there's gonna be no perfect fix. One, one system results in a loss. That is, you lose the right to amend if you go to the Australian ballot. You may get some more people to vote, but you're not gonna get everybody to vote. I mean, no system is perfect. And we don't have the legislation yet in place to, to make a reality the kinds of options that Carl is suggesting. What I will say, though, is we have civility in our politics in this town for the most part because when people go to town meeting, they have to stand up in front of each other and address the public. And we're learning every town meeting how to engage in a civilized and, you know, meaningful method. There's not, we've had some meetings that have sort of deteriorated. Years ago, Art was very good at saying we should have a civility policy for all board meetings. And I think that conversation helped remind people, the national dialogue is now a bunch of people screaming epithets at each other, but in our town politics, regardless of whether I'm on the far left or somebody else is on the far right, when we go to town meeting, we have a civilized discussion that's quite productive. It couldn't take hours to get the points whill down to what to make a decision on, but it's, it's a public process that's teaching us every day the value of civility. If you wanna isolate people and have them stay in their silos, their homes and their jobs...
That's right.
Take away the one meaningful vote where they can come in and actually debate the merits and decide the merits. And we'll just go the way a lot of the rest of the country is going. I'll do my thing, don't need to come to your meetings, I can't have anyone put in.
Art, did I hear you trying to squeeze in a comment?
Well, I just saw, has everybody spoken, Art, that wants to speak?
Everyone has spoken. Doris? No? Everyone who wants to speak has spoken.
Okay. Well, it looks to me like we've got, we've got two different questions, and I'd just like to take them one at a time. Is it legally, can we go back to 7:30? Has nothing been posted at 6:30 that we can't go to 7:30, or can we go to 7:30 for the meeting?
I think Dave was suggesting earlier that there can be, there might be an emergency procedure, we're not sure about this, there might be an emergency procedure to fix a warrant, but we've gotta look into that. And whether or not this would be considered emergency also probably comes into play.
I guess my, my word is that, or I'll make a motion that we change the time of the meeting to 7:30 from 6:30 of the previous proposal.
We have a motion from Art that if, let me suggest, if possible, we move the town meeting time to 7:30.
I'll second.
Have a second from Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so the motion that if possible, we move the town, the time of the town meeting to 7:30 passes by a vote of 3-0-0. Go ahead, Art.
Okay, now, the second is, I'm not clear whether we have a clear guidance from VLCT as to whether we're doing this right or not. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into a legal argument, and I guess I would, if we don't really have a clear legal understanding of we're doing it right or not doing it right, I was somehow abandoned at being put on the, on the ballot for the, for the meeting on
I think we all feel that way. Do you wanna make the formal motion out of that?
I will. So it's a fair and reasonable, okay?
So we have a motion from Art that if possible, given legal ambiguities, ambiguities about the process of the budget vote, that we remove it from the town meeting warning.
Second.
Let it be voted, let it be voted.
Yeah.
Seconded by Tony. Any more discussion on that point? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that question also passes by a vote of 3-0-0.
We want to do it right. Okay.
Right.
That was for appreciation, not in hand.
Let me make, if I could, let me make one point clear for the people at home who may not have delved as deeply into this issue as the people here. If I could. From the level of passion here, it could be misinterpreted that the town, that the select board has taken the budget vote and moved it from town meeting to the floor, I mean, from, from town meeting floor vote to the ballot. The select board has not done that. The select board has put that to a town vote. So I would remind people that if it turns out this process is not defective, that the question has not been decided. The question will be decided by the people, and this is where politics comes into play. You have as much opportunity as somebody who's in, in favor of moving the budget vote to get your message out and make sure that your people show up at the polls.
I would nitpick that a little bit. The opinion you got from VLCT says that the process needs to be done as a floor vote unless a vote has been taken to cover ballots on, by, all ballots by Australian ballot, or whatever the language.
Public questions.
Yeah, public questions by Australian ballot. If you can find in minutes, and it would have had to have been a vote, that shows where that vote was taken on a floor meeting and passed, then you're right about what you're doing. But if you're, if you don't have evidence of that vote, the process that VLCT described is absolutely clear that this is decided as a floor vote, and if it's positive there, you can put it on, on the ballot.
Here from the next fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes. So it was not clear what you just said and what the motion was.
Right, right.
The motions that you adopted appeared to say that if the process is defective, you're not taking the ballot vote, but then in your comment after it, you're saying you're gonna go ahead and do the ballot anyway.
I'm saying, no, my comment was, setting, setting the discussion about process aside, the select board has not decided that the budget vote, vote, the budget vote will move from the floor to the ballot. We have not decided that. We decided to let the voters decide that.
You've put it on the warning, instead of warning it, as it has happened in the past, putting it on the warning for a floor vote.
Town meeting, yeah.
For a floor vote. You made the decision, instead of putting it on the warning for a floor vote, which, frankly, I'm surprised you didn't do it that way. I don't know why you did this because it's so, it's so run so counter to what we've done.
Karen, 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 please, we, I made that point several times.
I know that, but you don't seem to be, you are, you have already put it on the ballot. You have put it on the Australian ballot for the next day.
It, it is the thing I'm trying to make clear to the people at home. It is asking the question. It is not moving the vote. Is that, is that clear to people?
Yes, I understand that.
You have no right to put that on Australian ballot without a floor vote.
It's, Tim, it's not clear to me. It sounds like you're, you're saying you have not, Tim, what I've heard you say, because I'm confused by what you're saying.
Right.
Okay. That you have not decided to put the budget question of, do we spend X amount of, or we raise X amount of dollars for taxes on the Australian ballot? You have not decided that. Nobody tonight has said you've done that. What we have said is you've placed on the Australian ballot the question of whether or not all future budgets are gonna be decided by Australian ballot.
Correct.
And so your comments seem to suggest you're gonna go ahead and have that question on the ballot, when all the, all the questions about process tonight were that you, as a select board, don't have that authority based on the statute. The statute says that the only people who can authorize that question to be on the Australian ballot is the voters at a floor meeting. So I'm not quite understanding, if you said, look, if the process was defective, we're gonna, we've warned it, we're gonna have this discussion on the floor, absolutely great. That's where it should happen. You're exactly right. People can debate various points of views on it and vote, and that vote will be binding. And if they say, yes, we're gonna start putting it on the Australian ballot, ballot, it's, it's a done deal. That's good. But you can't say we're gonna let the voters decide this question of whether it's on the ballot or not because what we've been telling you is, the select board doesn't have the legal authority to do that. And your motion seemed to say, since the process has been defective, or if it is defective, it has to, that question of, can it appear on the Australian ballot, has to come off the Australian ballot. That's what I heard you telling the public.
If I can go back to the motion for a minute, because I, now I'm confused.
Now I'm confused.
The motion, as I understood it and noted, was that if possible, to remove the question of a floor, of an Australian ballot question on the budget moving to Australian ballot for next year, just, we would remove that from the ballot this year if possible.
Right.
And the question really boils down to, our information from the Secretary of State's office, by what you saw on there, too, indicated that public questions were approved to be voted on Australian ballot. You brought up at the very beginning, very good point. Now, that's a question, who's right or wrong here, and do we want to, as you suggested, we're gonna get into litigation over this later, we just need to remove this, is what I'm hearing here. The process, as we got it, we explained from the Secretary of State, was that this vote, and they note that it was taken, can't find it yet, but it's noted on their site it's taken, so we need to bring this back so that if we let this vote go through, it could be completely wrong, we'd have to rescind it somehow and have a bigger mess. Because on the State Secretary of State's website, it says that this vote on public questions was taken. You make a very good point. Was it all questions? Was it one question?
Well, we have taken a question, we have done it, you know, in this, in this, you know, to put the appropriations onto Australian ballot.
Where does it fall? We don't wanna make that, the way I'm understanding, we don't wanna make that mistake, maybe to shorten it down, is motion, the motion is to remove that question, that ballot article, if possible, before, before the ballot's going in. Is that, is that what it...
That's the way I understood what Art was asking.
I have to...
That's fine, Ken, from underboard. That's fine, Ken, on the motion.
Okay. I have clients that are on a tight deadline because I'd have to file something. because I'd have to file something to get this sorted out, probably by Wednesday, Thursday at the very latest, because of the court's availability. So if there's any way I'll even participate in a telephone conference with whoever you designate, because I wouldn't be there to tell the Secretary of State what to say. I would be there, hopefully, so the question is presented in a way that you get the clear answer that you need to say, McClintock's full of baloney again, or holy smokes, he actually may be right for once in a million years.
And we can't find the document.
Well, there is no document that says you can vote all public questions.
Gone back playing on years and notes already.
Yeah.
But tradition, you know, holds to what we're saying. I was going to say, when we move.
My point, if I could make it again, and maybe this, I'll try better. Well, you acknowledge that it is arguable, and we were having the argument, whether or not we have done this right.
Yes.
It's arguable whether or not we've done this right.
Right.
Okay. Setting that aside, if we did it right, and this was my point to the people at home, if we did it right, we have not changed anything yet.
Understood.
If we did it right, this goes to the Australian ballot, the people vote, that's when it would be changed.
Well, you'd take a vote and the vote would be binding, whatever the vote was, either up or down.
Yeah.
On putting it, putting future budgets before the public by Australian ballot.
Right.
If the select board, now that I understand you, determines that the process was not correct, that the select board should not have voted to put it on the Australian ballot, you're going to do what you can to say that that, if you can't get it off the ballot, it's basically not going to be a binding article.
The motion as it stands now, that if we decide the process is defective, there will be no vote on moving the budget this year. Is that everyone's understanding?
Next year, moving it next year. You're always changing the voting on the budget to the next fiscal year by statute. You've got to vote for the town budget this year at the floor meeting.
Please make that clear.
Right.
Please make that clear, Tim.
So you're saying
to the folks at home.
We could, we could, if we decide the process is defective, vote at town meeting floor this year to ask the question next year.
If you warned it, but you have not warned it now. You have warned it for the Australian ballot the day after. Had you warned it for the floor meeting, had you put the same language on the floor meeting, like has been done in the past, it would have been discussed on the floor, which we would argue is statutory. That's the way it needs to be done because that's always, that's the venue in which the budget has always been voted. In order to change it, the change has to come from the original venue that the budget is being voted in. So that question should have been placed on the warning for the floor meeting. When we talk about the listers and the, what we pay you guys and whatever. That's where that discussion has always traditionally been placed and come up.
Okay, my assumption there was if we find that the process is defective and we remove it, we have changed the warning.
Yes, you would have changed the warning for the next day.
And it's feeling questionable in my mind, given the different information we received, whether we can resolve a question that is going to have different opinions on it in time to put out a ballot. Now, the ballot is coming in a draft, probably tomorrow morning. So we can amend the ballot to either be a floor vote on this issue, go back to where we were, or drop it completely. The warning has to be out 30 days before the meeting, which is now four days past due. The warning's out. Amending the warning, I would have to check into the process of doing that. But I don't know if we can resolve a potentially defective process quick enough to make this work.
Could it be brought up from the floor anyway, without it being warned?
As a non-binding.
Because it has to be discussed.
That's been done in the past.
And this is.
So we could do it that way.
You could do it that way.
But it's non-binding.
But it's non-binding.
So no decision is going to matter.
But it's, this is not so urgent an issue that given the problems with it, we couldn't take this up next year.
Okay.
So I understand, and also for the people at home, based on this conversation that's going on, I understand your position, the board's position right now with regard to the motion is, the discussion, the substantive discussion that we have had here as to why what has been voted by the board is substantively not a good idea, is not necessarily persuasive enough for the board to change its position. Only if the board determines that it is without authority to change, to do what it has done, would it change its position. So you're acting, your decision is going to depend on whether or not you acted procedurally correct but are not acquiescing to the substantive arguments that have been brought up tonight. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what Tim said.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. That's what I thought I heard you saying, I wasn't quite sure.
I wanted, again, from a procedural point of view, I'm sure we could find in minutes when we made, the year we made the decision to move the ballot articles from the floor vote to Australian ballot.
She's referring to the not dropping appropriations.
Too many appropriations.
No, that's the same word.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, when we moved the appropriations, because it wasn't that long ago.
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and one.
In some collective tenure here. We voted that just the appropriations. If we had had in place a universal anything could be moved to Australian ballot, we wouldn't have needed to do that, would we? We would have been able to just move it.
That's right.
We don't have that. And my concern, listening to your discussion, is what the question to the Secretary of State is and how you decide whether this process is correct or incorrect and change it. I mean, it's really problematic to ask the voters to vote on something and tell them after they voted on it that, sorry, that doesn't count, because we didn't do it right. I mean, that's going to tick off a whole bunch of people if, if, if the thing. And again, I think we're giving examples that make it pretty clear that the process isn't right. We don't have a blanket okay to move things. We've talked about this particular issue as a separate and distinct issue, moving the budget at various town meetings. We talked about moving the appropriations. We approved that, and they got moved. Each of these has been separate. There is no universal thing in place that anybody's falling back on.
I don't, my thought was not that this was going to be a board decision, that's why we put it up to Australian ballot, that we were trying to get out as many people as possible and get their opinion back about whether in fact it should be done.
You don't have the authority to do that.
You can do it by Australian ballot in an advisory port, in an advisory way, and that's the only thing that's valid about it for advice.
Yeah, and if you have the ballot to make it advisory.
So we got to get a big, big. That might be the key to changing it.
Yeah.
Is changing the ballot, this be an advisory question on the Australian ballot to see where the town feels, that would remain intact the warning, because we're just changing it to an advisory, it's not completely intact, we don't look into that. But it would be an advisory vote, not a binding vote. That might be.
And if it's not discussed at the floor this year, and the Australian ballot is advisory, you still need to warn it next year for a conversation and a floor vote, which means it would be another year beyond that before, if it was passed positively, before your budget could actually be on Australian ballot.
And you'd be putting the same language on your floor meeting warning for next year.
Yeah, well, let's say this turns into advisory, next year you'd have a floor vote, ask permission to go to an Australian vote the following year, and then the year after that would be the first year you would actually vote on the budget.
Right, right, right.
And, but if you did an advisory vote this year, it might give you a solid idea of where the town actually stands.
But I would suggest, and I don't, you've already, there is other business. There is other business at our town meeting. If you did it that way, and it was a non-binding, that would give you the opportunity to raise this issue at this town meeting, to talk about the history, because you want people to understand what they're voting on the next day.
You've already made it an issue, so we all have to talk about it.
Right, right, but again, if you've got it on the ballot, it should be somewhere in the warning, well, it's not, but it would have to be under other business. And you're going to explain.
At the end of the meeting, and people are leaving.
And people are leaving, but, you know, you're going to explain that this is a non-binding question and however you want to explain it.
The moderator could change the order.
Well, that's true, that's true too. Yes, absolutely.
Just a little coordination.
If I could interject here, before the suggestion of making it a non-binding vote was made, I was thinking that, given Dave's comments, that determining if this question, if this process is defective between now and our chance to do anything about it might be too difficult. If it might not be more prudent to amend the motion to say, just remove the question from the ballot.
I think that's as, I mean, that works the same way. Again, the big issue comes in the warning, and the time limit on the warning. And we'll have to find out how to amend that. It might require a change of date.
But you'd have to amend it, you know, you'd have to amend it either way.
Either way, it needs to be amended, so.
You're amending if it's non-binding and amending if you're taking it off.
Whatever choice you want to make, either take advisory, take it off, switch it to a floor vote really at this point, because we could do any one of them if we're amending the warrant. But we might have a better chance of maintaining the date if we just eliminate it.
But if you don't take a vote, you don't have to change the warning.
If the vote is removed from the ballot and no vote can be taken, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, all I'm saying is if you change the warning, you have to change the meeting date. But there's nothing in this situation that's going to require you to change the warning. You voted the warning, the warning is out. Things have happened since where you learned that you warned something you couldn't warn, so you can cancel that vote. You're not doing anything negative to the voters by removing an article that shouldn't have been there in the first place. It would be a sin to try to add something to the ballot that was not in the warning. Then you would need to change the warning, change the date of the meeting and all that. But simply removing it from the ballot does not require you to change the warning or change the meeting date.
Is that an option, to change the ballot without changing the warning?
We haven't got the draft of the warrant.
You don't have it.
So we haven't gotten the draft of the ballot yet, we'll have that tomorrow morning. So that goes back to the original motion, is we just remove this article. And Lon, thank you, that's a very good point. By removing it, we're not changing the warning, we, more information has come up, we do have, of all the discussion here, the one that troubles me most is the legal question of, you know, we're told one thing, all this is all valid points, but we've had trouble locating, even though our former clerk has told us, the Secretary of State's office has told us that this document exists, we haven't found it yet. So that to me is troublesome, because if we don't find it, we're going to have a problem. If this passes and suddenly we can't back this up, I assume we would just open the book and it would be there.
I'd like to hear a motion saying that.
I like to have some confidence that what Lon says is true, that we put out a warning and then we go in, we put out a warning and then in the dead of a night, in the smokes-filled room, we cross the question off the ballot and hand that ballot out to people, that's your legal opinion that we should do that?
Since you're not my client, that's not my advice, but that is my legal opinion.
And that kind of makes sense because we're not asking anything different, we're just not asking something we had suggested we would.
Right.
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 Okay, let's try this. Is there a motion to amend the motion on the table to read, if legally possible, remove the budget question from the ballot? So moved by Art?
Second.
Seconded by Tony? Is that the right question, Gary?
I have a question, because if you say if it's legally possible, it would require us to have an affirmative legal opinion before, like noon tomorrow.
Right.
I think we base it on good information we've received recently. And like I said, we're not, we're not changing what we're asking anybody. We're just not asking something that has a particular potential legal problem in it.
And we can't find the backup.
And we can't find the backup, which is something that came up
Right.
in the last few days, and even the Secretary of State's office said, well, they don't have a copy either. Which then I don't know why it's on their website.
And anything you do is only legally possible. Who have you been talking to so far in Montpelier?
We talked to the Secretary of State's office, and we based it on the webpage, and then I had more questions, so we went to VLCT. And we understand the process you're all talking about.
You might, you might.
But these things appear to have already been approved, and they were leading us to believe that these things had been approved. But now we're having trouble finding the documentation that says these were approved, and that leads to Lon's original statement where that could cause a big problem.
Yeah. You might, if you have not already, you might consider JP Isabel.
JP, yeah, JP's the main one, yeah.
So might we ask that what you find out and what gets finally decided and is going to happen is communicated to Lon?
No, I think, I think they're about to talk about whether they're going to go with this motion or a slight modification based on dates.
Yeah, the motion, right now we're discussing an amendment to the motion, and the amendment would say, if legally possible, remove the budget question from the ballot. And my concern is that is just as illegal as a defective process.
I would say in accordance with law.
He would say that, like, in accordance.
I would say as opposed legally possible, I think, I think you bring up the point that you might need a legal opinion, but if you said, to remove it all in accordance with law.
Okay, this is going to be great. Is there a motion to change the wording?
I need more paper.
Of the motion to say, in accordance with law, remove the budget question from the ballot?
So you have to amend your motion, Lon.
Or you can amend it.
Art. Art can.
You can withdraw this motion.
Pardon?
I did not hear what you said clearly. Please say it again.
Okay. I'm asking if you want to suggest another amendment to change the wording of the motion to say, in accordance with law, the select board will remove the budget question from the ballot?
Yes, I shall remove.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 So we are back to an amendment that says.
Motion.
We're still one amendment of the motion away, I believe. So we had one that said one thing, we changed the wording there. So now, I think essentially we need to vote again. Shall the select, in accordance with law, shall the select board remove the budget question from the ballot? All in favor say aye.
Say that again.
Yeah, I think we have the motion, we have the amendment. Yeah, I think we have the motion, we have the amendment, we have the other amendment, we just dealt with one amendment, we're on the First Amendment. The First Amendment now reads, in accordance with law, shall the select board remove the budget question from the ballot? I'm calling for a vote. It's the same vote we just had.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The vote passes three zero zero. We are at the motion.
Go, Tim, go.
I am loving this. Fourteen years of Toastmasters talking this. And it's my first time to do anything with it in thirty years. So now the actual amendment is, all those others were just wording the question. The actual motion is, thank you, golly. The actual motion is, in accordance with law, shall the select board remove the ballot question, in accordance with law, shall the select board remove the budget question from the ballot? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes three zero zero.
So do we need a motion to put it on the floor agenda?
I, myself, I don't wanna go there. We'll bring it up.
That's getting back into the warning.
That's then your timing.
Oh, they can't do the warning. Okay, all right.
We will talk about it under other business. I don't know if maybe one of you would wanna bring it up.
Sure.
Yeah, oh, I think we should. There are people obviously concerned both ways. If we brought it up every year, I think it would.
Then hopefully they'll show up.
Well, yeah.
Either way.
Yeah.
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 Show up to vote the budget, or show up to get it.
If that's the only way their vote's gonna count, yeah.
I think we can get people to show up.
Yeah.
The only remaining issue would be the motion to change it to seven thirty, because that gets into the meat of the morning again. So maybe we can come up with something.
If you convene the meeting, you can control the timing of when the voting takes place. And with the public relations effort by some citizens who are volunteering tonight to help you with that.
Can we convene the meeting at six thirty and postpone it till seven thirty?
You can convene it and adjourn it for a shorter time? You can convene it and not vote until a certain time?
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
You're complying with your warning.
Hey, yeah, absolutely.
And if we need to organize a pop-up, slideshow stuff?
That would have to be for the North Bennington people. The Shasprey people might wanna go to the meeting.
No, I'm just saying for the people who do come.
That do, yes, that are there, not going to school.
We don't wanna, maybe we wanna rescind that previous motion. I like that idea of leaving the warning the way it is, let it be known here, here and far and wide, that the meeting will convene at six thirty and adjourn at that time until seven thirty. And that's just a procedural thing.
You better have donuts.
Boy, yeah. You could have some really angry people in the word, if the word doesn't get out.
Carlos bringing the donut.
No, I, our group will pull together some refreshments.
Unless you think that there's a way to change that.
It's back to the warning. Those warnings are part that worries me, because then into the thirty-day.
Then you're actually changing the warning.
You're changing the warning.
Right, right.
Okay, so you with us on that, Art?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't get a lot of that.
Okay, it was suggested, and we think it's a good idea, that back on the question of the time change, that instead of going into the essentially legal process of figuring out if we can change the time on the warning, that we just do it procedurally, and with the help of these people to get the word out, that we will convene at six thirty, and we will immediately adjourn, adjourn until recess.
Recession.
We will recess until seven thirty, thereby moving the time to seven thirty, without really involving anything legal, just a meeting procedure.
If a lot of enough people know about it, I'd hate to have some people come and have to sit for an hour. If they think they can do it, that's fine with me.
Everyone here has offered to bring refreshments to fill that hour.
They can have their dinner.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking for a motion to rescind the previous motion on changing the time of town meeting.
I made it to all rescind it.
Okay, we have a motion from Art. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of rescinding the motion to move the time of town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero zero.
Somebody tell Tommy, do you like?
Well, he has to come and assess the meeting.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Tell him you can go have dinner.
Okay. What else you wanna talk?
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you.
You're a pretty good job.
That was responsive government, thank you.
Very good. Excellent.
Do we have any other business to take care of tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Thank you.